Welcome, everybody, to the January 4th, 2023. Happy New Year. Welcome again to the January 4th, 2023. Happy New Year, everybody. Planning Commission meeting. Can we start with the roll call?
Commissioner Chan.
Present.
Commissioner Del Negro.
Present.
Commissioner Quigg.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Wong.
Here.
Chair Davis.
Can we do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. What a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda review. Do we have any changes or questions we want to make about the agenda? No? Okay. Approval of minutes. We have two sets. One from October 6th. Anybody want to make a motion on those or make any changes? I did notice one little typo. Sorry. On page two, in the big, big paragraph in the middle, it says "Lamitas" with an S, school. It's just Lamita. Sorry. Did you have something?
Are we doing individually and which one first or together?
We're talking about the first one first.
Okay.
Go ahead. Chris.
On these six meetings, just the meetings covering the city planning, zoning ordinance.
Mm-hmm. General plan.
There was one part of the conversation that we had at the end about connection of the California Drive extension to Victoria and having it being a bike lane going the other direction that was not captured anywhere. Which even the, it was in the group set to go to incorporate that discussion with the board. So make sure that that was added on. That's been part of the conversation.
I do, yeah. And in that same paragraph that Chair Davis mentioned, I would say like what, the fourth line from the bottom, Victoria crossing these route for pedestrians in both directions. Was there a little bit more that you were thinking?
Positions and bicycles.
Positions and bicycles. Okay.
That is sufficient.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? We have motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from October the 6th.
With the corrections noted.
With the corrections.
With the corrections.
I'll second.
Votes, please.
Commissioner Chan.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro.
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg.
Abstain. I was not there.
Vice Chair Wong.
Yes.
Chair Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with Commissioner Quigg abstaining.
Thank you. And the second set is our last meeting, December 19th. Any questions, changes, motions?
I have none. I'm happy to make a motion on this one as well.
Actually, I want to, I suggest one addition under the public comment section. Might be good just to amend that to say there was no public comment.
We do have that. Our motion passes five zero. Public comment was closed 7:23 PM. There was no public comments on this project. Who's that?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to pass the minutes from the December 19th meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chan.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro.
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong.
Yes.
Chair Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Next up is public communication. Time set aside for the public to address us on something that is under our purview but not on tonight's agenda. We have nobody here in person. Anybody online raising their hand?
There are no hands.
Thank you. Can we close that public communication?
I'm happy to make a motion to close public communication.
You have a second?
No motion necessary for this one.
No, this one, just the other ones.
Yes. Right. Thank you.
All righty. Okay, now we're up to number four, public hearing. A public hearing on a design review permit application to allow the demolition of an existing single-story residence and construction of a three-story, single-family residence located in the duplex residential R2 zoning district with an exception request to allow an architectural feature, roof eaves, to encroach one foot within the required three-foot interior side lot line. Is this a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Davis. Scumata Planning Manager, I'd like to introduce Kanika Pompoi, who is going to be, who's the project planner and will be making the presentation for this item this evening. Kanika.
Thank you, Rasta. I will share my screen. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes. Thanks.
Okay. Perfect. Good evening, Chairperson Davis and members of the Planning Commission. This item is brought to you tonight as a result of Section 10.05.2500 of the Millbrae Municipal Code, which requires the design review permit for the construction alteration or exterior modification of a building. The applicant is requesting a design review permit to allow the demolition of an existing, single-story residence and construction of a new, three-story, single-family residence located in the R2 zone with an exception case to allow an architecture feature, which is the roof eaves, to encroach one foot within the required three-foot interior side lot line. The project site is in the Marina Vista Park subdivision located on the south side of Spruce Street, between Monterey Street and Bay Street. The site is located on a 25-foot square foot lot in the R2 zone with the general plan designation of medium-density residential. Again, the zoning is R2 and the existing home is a little over 1,000 square feet and they're proposing to increase the size to 22 square feet over three stories. These are images of the existing home. And this is the existing site plan. Again, the home is a little over 1,000 square feet and currently has no parking garage. The applicant is proposing to increase the total square footage to 2,200 square feet and this will include a two-car tandem garage. The project will also consist of four bedrooms, four baths, and three stories. The FAR is, will be increasing from 40% to 88%, which is the allowable maximum per code and the lot coverage would decrease from 40% to 39%, where the maximum per code is 50%. All ground floor and upper story setbacks requirements will be met. The existing home is one-story and consists of three bedrooms, two bathrooms, living room, kitchen, and laundry space. The proposed home on the first floor will include the two-car tandem garage, a front storage room, laundry room, and at the rear, a first bedroom with closet and a hallway connecting to a full bathroom and stairway to the second floor. The second floor will include the front entrance steps to the front door, entry room, a living room with open kitchen concept, hallway and stairway that will lead either downstairs through the first floor or up to the third floor. Will also include a bathroom in a rear second bedroom with a walk-in closet. The proposed third floor will consist of a front main bedroom with an en suite bathroom and closet, a common area, and a hallway connecting to the rear main fourth bedroom with walk-in closet as well as an en suite bathroom. This is the existing front elevation. So the existing home is single-story and similar to the other single-family homes in the neighborhood. The front of the exterior is pink stucco with brown roof trim, white painted wood door, and vinyl front window with white trim. The existing roof is open gable roof type with a roof pitch of 112 and a flat roof near the rear. This is the rear existing elevation. Existing right side. The existing left side. So the applicant is proposing to increase the height. Currently, the home, the one-story home is at 14 and 1/2 feet. This new proposal will increase the height to 30 feet. The proposed exterior finishes will include a dark gray stucco finish on the first floor, an exterior walnut siding finish on the second and third floors. It will also include a front wood door with four glass windows as well as a staircase with 30-inch height planter boxes at the entry stairs. The proposed roof will consist of dark gray shingle with a combination of open gable and a hip roof type. The roof pitch will be a combination of 312, 512, 612, and 1012 soap roof. This is the proposed rendering from the front and the side. This is rendering continuing from the rear and the other side. Neighbor consultation forms were sent out to the 10 closest neighbors. Three adjacent neighbors returned the forms in support of the project. Six neighbors did not return the forms at all and one adjacent neighbor returned the form in opposition of the project. So the neighbor located at 339 Cedar had concerns expressed for the height of the building, on-street parking, and property maintenance. So staff evaluated the concerns expressed by that property owner and based on site visits and project research, staff is in support of the project. So regarding the height of the building, because the lot is narrow and non-conforming, the lot is 25 feet wide and standard lot is 50 feet wide. In order for the applicant to build a sufficient, single-family home, applicant needed three stories to provide ample habitable space for the residents while also complying with the two-car garage requirement and open space requirements for the backyard. So the following findings are required per the Municipal Code to approve this request for design review permit. The first one is that architecture and landscape and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and ground are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Also, the project complies with all applicable development regulations. The project will not cause a significant visual impact to the neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence and that the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city, will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood. So, subject to conditions of approval, including two special conditions that are that a tree will be planted in the front yard and to comply with the city's moratorium on artificial turf, that will be removed. Staff recommends the Planning Commission consider adopting a resolution approving the design review permit to allow the demolition of a single-family residence and construction of a new, three-story, single-family residence at 73 Spruce. The applicant and property owner are here if the commission has any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant architect like to say anything else? We'd love to hear from you.
Peter Chow, if you'll accept panelist, you can come in to speak. Okay, we'll just give Peter a couple of minutes to accept the panelist. Peter Chow, can you accept your, the panelist's request?
Somebody walked away from there?
Yeah.
Wait, I think he did it.
Okay.
Did he or did he disappear? There he is.
Perfect. Hi, Peter, you can come off mute.
Okay, how about now?
Welcome. Would you like to tell us a bit about the project?
Yeah. So on the white-hand side, that's a German. Actually, it's the homeowner for 73 Spruce Street. I think the major concern and also we will actually request for, you know, exemption, which is will be the roof overhang, which literally, just like a foot overhand, which is like 12-inch in order, you know, to both sides of the setback, which will be enclosed. And in order to allow for proper drainage system, that's what we ask for, that's for the roof. And also, when it comes to, which the planner just mentioned about the opposition from the labor at 339 Cedar Street, which is located at the rear of 73 Spruce Street. And the falling concern related to the structural heights and parking, I think the height of the, of our three-story position decides in a line with realways, 30 feet high limit, which I believe, and also the planner just mentioned that. And the design opts for tandem parking, watch, with a driveway to meet the roadway parking requirement with enclosed interior parking space and also exterior driveway parking, so adds up the total parking space provides can potentially fit three vehicles adequately. And also the parking still within the parking line of 73 Spruce.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant? Just clarification questions we can discuss later.
Yes. Question for staff. So this is a non-conforming lot, so it has these special conditions and special construction and alternate design criteria. So can you give us a little bit of history about this lot? Is that typical? And, you know, there's various codes in the city for like a normal 5,000-square-foot lot, but this one is half that size? Has this lot been subdivided before? Or, you know, a little bit about the history of this lot and why it's this size? And then also a little bit about the zoning in this area? How they're all R2 versus, you know, single-family designation? Do you have an understanding of the history about the zoning in this area?
To answer your question on regards to the lot size, we looked into the, to the past history. Couldn't find any, anything with regards to why this lot was, is substandard. Once in a while, there are lots, for one reason or another, where lots aren't conforming. It happens throughout the city and in other cities as well. You know, it could be when the subdivision was originally planned, that they, it was created in this fashion, but looking back through the records, the city's records aren't too great, but did confirm that this is a legal lot. And because of the narrowness of the lot and the ability for the property owner to build a single-family home, it is severely restricted in terms of the setbacks.
And then also for the designation in this area, a lot of the designations are all R2 lots. Can you comment on that? If, I guess, maybe as to the character of the neighborhood, are there a lot of R2 developments or mostly, single-family homes and the history of that?
This area is all zoned R2, as you mentioned. It's a variety. There are duplexes, single-family homes in the area. So it's a combination of both, single-family and duplex properties here. There's also some triplexes in the area, not in this block, I think, but in the area as well. So it's a combination of all and there hasn't been any, I'd have to take a look at the records to see about, you know, when this was rezoned, but there hasn't been any overall rezonings recently for this area, just kind of how the city was planned originally.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy?
I had to unmute. Thank you. I'm just noticing, or I noticed, that the application's submittal date was March of 19 and it was deemed complete in December 22. Do we have any history? Not that it really makes that much difference, but what caused this application's submittal in 19 and complete in 22? Think I read something someplace in this packet about it was going to be a duplex. Was it the same owner that was looking at making it a duplex and then they changed their mind? Little bit of history on why this has been sitting there since 19, 2019.
Sure. Yes. Commissioner Quigg, this project actually got submitted prior to me joining the city, but when we reviewed the project, there were, it was originally duplex, which didn't, the proposal didn't meet several development standards. And the staff worked with the applicant on minimizing or complying with the development standards to the extent possible. And it came to a point where the ability to fit everything that they wanted for a duplex in the slot, because it is so narrow and small, was impossible. So the plans changed to what is before you tonight. Additionally, there was an architect change somewhere in between where we were trying to work with the applicant on a design that is compatible with the neighborhood and is something that would reflect the character of the area in terms of just the roof slopes and articulation. So we worked with the applicant on the design as well as the compliance with development standards. And that took a couple of years, as you correctly pointed out. So we've, we've worked a lot. We didn't show you the, the previous designs. We do have a previous color board that shows you what, how the evolution of that design happened, but we're, we're satisfied with the outcome and that's why we have decided to bring you this project tonight.
Thank you.
Alan?
So the clarification then for these neighborhood response on the comments that were opposed, there's no date of applicant, date that was response received, but it appears that the opposition letter was dated 3/5/19. So is it fair to say that those comments or opposition did not apply to this current design?
I thought I saw a second letter went out saying, hey, we changed the design. Have you checked those out?
Yeah, that's correct. And so we, we, there still were concerns from the neighbor. I think it's just generally not specifically related to the, to the aesthetics of the home, but more that concerns with regards to parking and investment in the community. Those kinds of concerns didn't involve the, the look of the, of the structure and the design, per se. So, yeah, the height and is still approximately the same compared to the first structure design, but the, the concerns were just, I think, global rather than specific to the aesthetic.
I had two questions. One was, obviously, there's a roof overhang that doesn't meet the code as far as where it's located. Drainage on that side? I'm assuming it's angled out towards that property. Concern obviously would be drainage from that roof going on to the neighboring property is a big issue. That does have a drain line, is what I can tell, but I can't really tell from the picture. Was that looked into detail as far as the drainage from that side?
Yeah, the drainage would be further looked at into more detail with the Public Works Department when they submit their billing permit. They would have to drain on-site. Can't drain on, off of the site to other properties. So Public Works will ensure that all the drainage is contained within the site.
Is there drainage, it's a very long, narrow property. They have a drainage system for that length of property to try and get stuff away from the back? Is it covered in the landscape design or?
I'm not 100% sure. Perhaps the property owner may know about the drainage. Not to, not to, not sure about that.
I'll leave it there for now, but I just want to make sure if we've covered it or not. Obviously, the roof drain will be a big issue for that side. I'm always concerned about privacy alignment. I appreciate this house, all the windows are on the front and back. There's a couple on the side, very limited number on the side. How do those line up on the houses next to it? I really couldn't figure that out from the plans that were shown.
Yeah.
Looking at A 4.2 has the side of the house with the, 4.3 has the other side. Are the grade squares on there, the alignment?
Yeah, that's, that's what it is. The light, the light gray outline.
It was difficult to understand that in the design itself.
Yeah.
There was, there's a little limited lineup of windows on the west side. Second story. Does that neighbor have any privacy concerns?
The, on the west side, the top floor window?
Second floor.
The second floor window. Oh, right, the, the slight overlap. You know, there's a little bit, uh, we didn't, we didn't hear anything from that neighbor, um, about any concerns about privacy.
It was a very direct view.
It is, yeah. I mean, I think that, that window there, because it is on the common floor, that could shift, um. Let's see here. Yeah, that, 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 uh, window looks like it's, um, the stairway, on the stairway.
Stairway, is that a high stairway, horn, turn or up the stairway? That stairway is long wise with the house, so you'd be walking past it, looking through it.
Right. Maybe the applicant can confirm that that stairway is, uh, going down or up to that window. That's actually close to the landing, um, on page eight, two point one, you can see there's a stair, um, from the second floor going down. And at that landing is where the window is. There could be an opportunity there to, um, raise that sill height a little bit. So that you won't be directly looking into the window.
Direct views like that, lining up that close to houses, these are really close, so.
Yeah.
Could it also be a glass that's not see-through, so to speak?
That's another option, yes, it could be opaque, um, to a certain height, still allow lights still.
I'd like to see if the applicant would be willing to work with the city and, and work with the, uh, changing of that window design to give a little privacy to the neighbor next door directly.
Peter, are you, are you still there?
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Did you hear that comment about the?
Yes, I just. Comment about a window which is facing the southwest elevations, uh, we are talking about the window. It's, uh, actually, uh, that's gonna be a privacy issue with, um. Labor on the white-hand side when we are standing in front of house. And those two windows actually located, um, along the stairway. On the second floor, the first one is actually going down from second to, to the, to the first floor. And also the second window on a third level, which will be. Coming down from a third floor to a second floor. So I would say, you know, I'm willing to reduce the size and, and, and revise the drawing. On the third floor window, but then when it comes to second level C. Because we have to also concern about the building code and mechanical code. We have to actually provide enough natural wind direction and natural light, which is eight percent, four percent. So we actually adequately calculated the size and, and the sill height. And we cannot actually increase the sill height due to structural design of the family members. Yeah, so we have a little issue about revising the second floor window which facing a label along the stairway. But the third floor window, we should be able to revise the size.
Sure.
The third floor window doesn't seem to look directly into another window across the way, it's only the second floor window coming down the stairwell. To which when you're walking down that stairwell, you're gonna be looking straight into somebody's house. I think there should be a solution here to reduce the direct overlap.
But can we use it, Pete, Peter, can we use a different glass?
Uh. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the owner actually has an idea, he wants to, uh, jump in and speed.
Okay.
So that he's want to bring in for the second floor window. Oh, opening, yeah. Oh, yeah, so the owner said, he's willing to, um, revise the second floor window which facing. The southwest wall on second level, uh, he's asking, uh, to see if the commissioner would approve for opening window. Let's say, uh, we, well, he is willing to increase the sill height. And can he actually propose, um, two window instead of just one? So that way we can actually, um, maintain the total. Window opening area that meets the building code and mechanical code, but that is that, you know, it's going to be a. Elevated from the second floor. Let's say we'll be, uh, four feet away from it or five, but then it's gonna be like two individual opening window. Instead of a single one.
So, as I am saying, what you're saying is that you'd have two windows that kind of be offset higher and lower as you're walking down. But they would be higher sills, so you have the same area of window light, but they would be not directly overlapping the neighbor's window. That to me seems like a very valid solution, that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I have one question and I.
Sorry Kathy, I, I recognize Nathan, you can be next.
Sorry.
No worries, um, so I got a, a couple of questions, um, and they're kind of different themes, we'll ask them each separately. So the first question I had is, it's my understanding that the current property is being rented out. And it seems to be occupied right now. Um, have you shared your, so I guess this is to the applicant, have you shared your plans for, uh, this project with that resident?
Uh, so the current tenant which now currently occupied, so I'm sorry, I try to be honest to you. I do not know about this, so, uh, I would ask the owner right now, so I think he can provide proper answer to argue. So according to the owner's answer just now, so, uh, uh, the owner actually did notify. The current occupied tenants with, uh, all the documents that we submitted to the city, yeah.
S- s- sorry, so the, you shared documentation with the city, uh?
Oh, no, with the tenants, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so you shared your plans with the tenant and you also shared that with the city or not? Oh, I'm sorry, you're saying you shared what you, this application you shared with the tenant also?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, so according to the owner, what he just provided me the answer. So the owner, they did share the document and also the plan which we submitted to the city to the current occupied tenants.
Okay, uh, any idea how they responded?
Okay, let me ask the owner. Okay, so I just asked, uh, the owner, according to his answer, um, he said, uh, they remain silent, no comments?
Okay, thanks. Uh, this, I guess, is a question for either, uh, the staff or the applicant. Has there, have any details been shared about, uh, the demolition of the building? Like what kind of demolition it will be, how much material could possibly be recovered from, from it? I didn't see anything in the plans about it and I didn't see anything, I think, in any of the other documents.
Uh, we, we don't have that information.
Okay. Um, okay, one other question, um, so I did notice, uh. Uh, seems like there's going to be a lot of, uh, gas appliances in the building. I think that seen there's, that's perfectly compliant with, uh, the city's current codes. Does feel to me like there's a trend towards more electrification and with greater electrification, there'll be a need for. More, you know, higher capacity circuits, for example, or higher voltage, uh, in a lot of different areas. Like EV chargers, for example, often require higher voltage as do most electric ranges. Is there any consideration in the current plans towards potentially supporting that? Or is that just not a scenario that's been looked into?
The, um, the, uh, so the, the house will have to be compliant with the existing reach codes and the building codes, which. Which, uh, I believe require electrification, um, for substantial demolition, which this would qualify under.
Didn't that reach code have a, some, did, did it, was it, did it apply to single-family home construction also?
I'll have to double check, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, if it complies with the existing city code, then I guess that's fine, I'm just asking. Some, some of the other projects that we've seen have, uh, done, have put in, uh. Electrification improvements that weren't necessarily required and I'm just curious.
I can take a look at that and get back to you after discussions.
Okay, sounds good, uh, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
One thing Nathan, if you look at the, uh, conditions of approval number thirty-eight, it talks about what happens. After demolition, there are rules they have to follow about recycling and reuse, we don't have volume, but there are rules that they're gonna have to follow. So it doesn't all just go to landfill in one fell swoop, okay?
All right, thank you Chair.
Kathy?
Yes, thank you. On the proposal, um, they talk about, and I think this is for staff. Building height would increase fourteen-five to thirty. The roof pitch is a combination of three twelve, five twelve, six twelve, ten twelve. I am noticing that for me. On some of the drawings, that third story, the pitch on that seems extremely high. Am I imagining it or is that one, one of the six twelves or ten twelves? I'm asking staff. The, the roof pitch above the first, well, the second floor, the garage, the second floor. Uh, is, is a pretty, it's a nice pitch. But the one on the third floor really looks. Out of sync for me. And I don't know if that's because it's a higher ceiling that they're doing it and. At what pitch is that, because I personally feel it's way too high that pitch. Based on some of the pictures I'm looking at.
Okay, so you, so the question that you are actually asking, so why is the second, where we standing in front of the property? The second level roof, why are the pitch and the slope versus, uh, the third, it's different, is that, is that what your question is?
Yeah, it could be, why is the pitch on the third story so much higher than?
Oh, it's not consistent with the second pitch, right? So, uh, what I can say is that we tried to maximize, you know. The high regulation according to our planning, so that's how we came up with the proposed design. So we actually maximized all the way up to a thirty feet in height, so that's what actually we came up with the design. But, uh, if you, if that's going to create some sort of a negative impact, we are actually willing to reduce the slope. But like I said, this slope, it's not even a forty-five degree, it's actually less than a forty-five. It's, hmm, like, it looks like it's only about thirty-six or something.
Well, it says here that some of the roof pitches are as big as ten twelve. I would tend to think the one at the first story with the big windows is at a three twelve. I, and, and I'm sorry, but I did not quite understand what you had said. It's because the family or something that you made the pitch so high on the top level.
Oh, no, I didn't say that, what I just mentioned is that we tried to maximize the height according to the planning regulation, which is a thirty feet limit. So that's why we tried to push the third level roof pitch all the way up to the limit.
Yeah, I, uh, personally, and I don't know how any of the other commissioners feel. I don't know why you wanna push it up to the thirty feet because it's making, based on my perception. It looks like. It's, it's, it, it's just out of whack. Um, I think the roof line with the smaller pitch or lower pitch would. Enhance the beginning because of the fact that the lot is only twenty-five feet. Um, it seems like if the pitch is lower, it would fit better. I'm asking staff.
Yeah, generally, a steeper pitched roof accentuates the height of the structure. Conversely, a lower pitched four twelve pitch roof is more shallow, um, and it minimizes the height. Could, could the, the, this home be designed to where the upper floor is a four twelve or, or a pitch that's less than six twelve? We'd have to ask the, the architect or I, I don't think the architect's here, but the, the owner, see if that would be something that, um, would be possible. But to answer your question, Commissioner Quigg, yes, it, it does, um, a lower pitch does kind of minimize the height. Um, it would, um, given the narrowness of this lot, would also, um, uh, make the appearance, uh, a lot less, um, tall, if you will.
Thank you. I hope other commissioners, uh, notice and feel the same way, um, I think it's very important.
Any more questions?
Uh, yes, so actually, um. I'm looking at the roof height from another perspective also that, uh, in terms of the elevations. I see a lot of the, uh, ground elevations, uh, a lot of the, the, uh, first floor, the garage, the side doors. They're all at elevation zero. And the question for the architect and the owner is that, has there been considerations of slightly elevating? Uh, the slab or the, uh, the foundation so that it's above or. Less prone to flooding or engulfment from rainwater storm, excuse me now. So this is a big area, uh, this is a big issue in that area about flooding and drainage, uh, some of the neighbors raised that. So can the architect or owner comment on, uh, how they're addressing the issue of mitigating flooding? And, uh, water entering the building, is there gonna be footing, raised slab? And then also if that is, uh, elevated, then that would increase the roof height also.
Peter, did you hear that question?
Uh, yes, I, I heard, I heard of it, so, um, I think the best approach and, and a solution to the roof pitch on the third level. And also remediation about a water intrusion for the ground level. We are actually willing to elevate the ground level. for the ground level, we are actually willing to elevate the ground level to at least maybe five inches to a foot, and also at the same time, we and owner decide to lower the pitch, so in that case, so we reduce the slope and the pitch, let's say a foot or two foot lower on a third level and also elevate the building at a ground level, that prevents the water intrusion, and also the third level pitch roof will closely match to a second level pitch roof at the front facade, what about that? And it's still not going to exceed the thirty-feet-high limit, or could be below that.
Yes, I think that would be an improvement in address these issues, too. How about you, Catherine?
I I totally agree, it would make such a difference in the look of that house, um it wouldn't it would be much improved, thank you to the applicant for agreeing to something like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um I had some questions about the responses for some of the um adjacent owner consultations. I'd like to confirm with the applicant that they read the three-three-seven Cedar Lanes Statement of Conditional Support, and they can confirm that they agree with what was written there, I think it'd be nice to get that at least documented for this person's comfort because they did ask that there's some conditional support of proposal, uh the owner, Ms. Fiona Lee, post-development, mentioned in this form, um and that's basically says that uh in the event of any damage to um her land and house structure, any structural, non-structural finishing and fixtures in her house due to the vibration from demolition and construction, ground settlement at her car porch, pavement fencing, building, and you can read onward from this, I'd just like some some confirmation that you agree with um her presumption of conditional um support because you've you've agreed that that is okay in conversation with her.
Before you answer that, Peter, um staff, this comment to me doesn't feel like anything we should be worried about, the city shouldn't be asking anybody to make promises, this feels like somebody who would either have to just work with their neighbor or it's a lawsuit in the future and it has nothing to do with this approval, am I right, am I wrong, what do you think?
Uh any agreements that are made between property owners can't be enforced by the city, um yeah, it it it's uh it's a tricky situation, but I suggest that um what the commission can do is to clarify whether these conversations did happen and um you know, and and confirm that the applicant is is uh will or will not be doing them, but not um hold the condition um to those specific conversations.
Because our consultation forms are not a contract waiting.
I'm not looking.
I know, but I mean, you're asking him, did you read it and are you gonna do it? That's him saying this is some sort of agreement and that that doesn't.
Guess what I'd ask then is, did you have this conversation and this this is actually accurate is what I'm asking?
Okay.
So to the applicant, did you have this conversation with um Ms. Angelina Leo at three-three-seven Cedar, and this is is this an accurate depiction of the conversation?
Uh one second, let me ask the owner, what next to now, how we found the way are three-three-nine Cedar Street. Yeah, okay, yeah, so the answer from the owner, he's aware of that, so that's his answer.
Am I satisfied he's aware that this was a discussion that they had and?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I had once one one point, which was I do agree with Chris uh with Commissioner Wong about the um the risk of water damage, first floor, I really appreciated that comment and the applicant's willingness to accommodate on on the uh roof line as well.
Thank you. Okay, um public comment then, if we're done with questions. I know there's nobody here giving us a speaker slip, is there anybody online?
Uh we have one hand, Kelly Drum, will you please come off mute?
Hello, am I off mute?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, um good evening, everyone, and thank you for this very thoughtful discussion about the project, um I am appearing on behalf of the owner of eighty-five Spruce Street, which is um uh just adjacent to this property, um I appreciate very much the uh changes that the applicant has agreed to regarding the pitch of the roof and the relocation of the windows uh which were identified to, they would indeed look right into the primary cooking, kitchen and hallway area of the adjacent property, so adjusting those windows or making them opaque is appreciated. Um the uh I am concerned on the owner's behalf with the encroachment of the roof eaves, but this may be mitigated by the reduced pitch, um there are drainage issues uh with runoff from roofs in the area, and as we can see in a storm like tonight, uh that can be a significant problem, and the steeper the roof, the faster the runoff, so if that uh is indeed reduced, that would be uh beneficial. The other uh issue that the owner asked me to raise is the hours of construction and debris removal, this is a uh you know, a small neighborhood and the buildings are indeed close together, the hours of construction uh under the city code as stated are from seven-thirty AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, eight to six on Saturdays and nine to six on Sundays. Uh I um we would request that that weekend hours be reduced or eliminated for the uh privacy and um the comfort of the neighbors, and that there be a number that we can call if times uh exceed what are approved so that we can lodge, we can get relief from excessive noise. Um also, again, because the area is quite tight with parking, um construction vehicles should not be allowed to park overnight in the area or there won't be any place for residents to park. So those are my comments and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and for the robust conversation and questions that the commission has posed to the applicant.
Thank you. Is that the only hand raised?
Yes, there are no other hands.
I'll vote to uh close public comment, or make a motion to pub, close public comment.
I'll second.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero, public comment is now closed.
Discussion?
I'd be happy to start a discussion, I came in with a little apprehension about a three-story building being in the area, I'm sure a lot of the residents local um have a concern by that, you see some of the comments on it, but the building is still within the height limit and it's no different size than the building next to it, um the argument that there's a height problem here, it doesn't really hold water, um I I really kind of got past that tonight, um having seen the design and gone through the the plan, so I I think that that really attenuated that risk to me, I think the public would have to agree that it is equal in height to the building next to it and three stories does not really create a odd structure and that it's just three stories, it's just in the same height. So um with that, I do want to say that um I'm very happy with some of the mitigations that they're willing to compromise with tonight, that tells me a really good candidate here is coming forward honestly with the project and wanting to work to make sure it works with their neighbors, I did read through the list of all the the potential grievances from other neighbors, nothing really stood up as being realistically a problem, and the city, of course, did that as well, they didn't see any problems, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing right now, and I think the structure looks beautiful, I think it is a a a positive for that community and its design and look, um there are some very nineteen-eighties two-story condo-looking structures that are not as appealing in the neighborhood, this kind of balances back out, so I'm very happy with what I'm seeing so far.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nathan?
Yeah, I I would concur with everything that Commissioner Del Negro said, I think it's a very attractive-looking design, um and given the constraints that uh that were imposed uh on the applicant by the site, the size of the site, it's really uh wonderful to see the expression of creativity on making such a nice structure and the uh the proposal before us, so yeah.
Alan?
Uh yes, I think that um the condition is that it's very nice design with what the owner has to work with, it's a R-two-zoned lot, so that the design is slightly different and requirements are slightly different than a single-family home, uh so this the side, architectural features on the side is a little bit plainer and flatter, but um uh it increases and maximizes use of the space while not overdoing it, so the twenty-two-hundred square feet is fairly very reasonable for, I think, the size of lot and with the neighborhood, it's not oversized, I think it's uh updates the neighborhood and uh you know, it sets a more continued precedent that uh other neighbors would be allowed to be able to build something like this also. And so, uh yeah, I think it's it'll be a great addition to neighborhood.
Thank you. Kathy? Mute.
Yes, um I'm prepared to make a motion, but I will need some help from staff because of the uh extensive uh changes that were agreed upon, um I make a motion to approve the design review permit to allow the demolition of an existing single-story residence and construction of a three-story, single-family residence located in the duplex residential R-two zoning district with the exception, request to allow an architectural feature, roof eaves to encroach one foot within the required three-foot interior side lot at seventy-three Spruce. Subject also to all the conditions listed and in addition uh the conditions that we discussed about this evening, um and uh I'm relying on a planning manager to go over them, I know the roof pitch is different, um the the window on the other side is gonna be adjusted, and um I think I heard the one about raising um a foot to take care of the um water issues, is there something else that I'm missing?
Those are the three I have.
Also, the modification of the window adjacent to the stairs.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Anyway, I make a motion.
Before we have a second, I also wanted to, I forgot, two compliments to add on to this project that should be recognized, they're adding garage, they're taking two cars off the street.
Adding parking.
And not only that, they're also increasing the setback from the street as well, pulling the building backward, allows a little more frontage, and the old existing building looked like it was pretty far forward, it almost maximized forward, so those are two things also this project is adding in value.
Through the chair, just wanted to get back to Commissioner Chan regarding the electrification. So the uh for this project, the reach codes would apply as it's a complete demolition of the existing house, um the home is required to to be electrified for space heating, water heating, um and clothes dryers, there are exceptions for natural gas that can be used for stoves, fireplace and other appliances if desired.
So so on that note, though, I did see in the plans, plans for a gas-water heater at least, um so.
That that will be that will be changed during the building permit.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I'd like to second the motion.
Before we vote, I didn't get to say anything, um which is fine, I don't have to say a lot, all I want to say is I think it is a fabulous design, it's it's basically a townhouse, it's a great way to use a small lot, uh making a huge improvement to the neighborhood, it's just an efficient, nice way to add housing and like you said, parking, which was fantastic. So and I didn't actually hate the roof on the top floor, but okay, we can we can drop it, but that's okay, um that's all, can we vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis? Motion passes five-zero.
Congratulations, subject to attend a appeal, and well done. What else? Next up, new business nun, staff updates, anything to share with us?
Uh yes, uh the special meeting originally scheduled for January eighteenth will be canceled for a lack of agenda items, uh the next scheduled planning commission meeting will be February sixth. Additionally, the City of Millbrae's seventy-fifth anniversary celebration will be held on January fourteenth, and there should be, we can distribute flyers, um uh just for the public to to be aware and for the for the planning commission. And then lastly, the League of California Cities is sponsoring a Planning Commissioner Academy, um this will be held March twenty-ninth through thirty-first, the deadline to register is um March twenty-second, uh Carmen will will send out information regarding that training if you wish to attend, um we can sign you up and provide more information through email.
Just curious, is that an in-person thing or a Zoom thing?
It is an in-person.
Where is it, what city?
It's in Southern California, Garden Grove.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all, thanks.
Anybody else have any other?
Uh just one public announcement, uh the Lunar New Year Celebration for Millbrae will be held at the end of the month, January twenty-ninth, hope to see everybody out there and uh hope for good rain, uh hope for good weather.
Anything else?
I'd just say be safe in the next couple of days with the rain, it's gonna be.
All right, then, return.
Thank you, Commissioner, see you next one.